Okay, it's the bottom of the hour. I'd like to go ahead and start the January twenty seven, two thousand and twenty five Planning Commission meeting. It's the first one of the new year, so looking forward to everything we have going on. If everyone who are citizens of the United States, please stand and join me in pledging allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. We're gonna go ahead and get things rolling right along. Gonna turn it over to staff announcements and reports.
All right, it's working. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, planning, our chairman. I always wanna say mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, chairman.
No, no, that's okay.
I have one announcement. I'm Justin Strickland, City Manager, by the way, for anyone who doesn't know. So we've had a vacancy in our, as our, in our Planning Director position. We posted it externally and internally. We had some, we had some good candidates, went through the interview process, and ended up selecting Ms. Shayla Reed, who is the current, I think, Community Development Director in Douglasville, which is this equivalent of our Planning Director over pretty much all the same departments. So she is starting on Monday, a week from today. So this will be your last meeting without a director. She should be here for your next one. And to help you, I know we're gonna talk about the U D O tonight, so we'll just have to get her up to speed on Peachtree City and how we work. And we're excited to have her. So she'll, she should be here at your next meeting. Yeah.
Excellent. Good news. Thank you.
So as we like to do usually early on in the year is just do an overview of the development progress on all of our active, active projects in the city. And maybe we can advance the slide? Did you do that or did I? Okay, awesome. So you, I don't know how well you can read this, but I did leave you copies at the desk there for your reference. And I'll start with the commercial development projects and just sort of run through these real quick. You're probably familiar with most of them. So the Aberdeen Mixed Use, that's the Partners' redevelopment into the mixed-use building. That's been inactive for a couple of months. They were just approved for site construction plans in October. And there's been no movement on that as of yet. Next, we have Adventure Aviation. We'll be looking at their landscape plan tonight. So they are moving right along in their progress. The Bridge Park Medical, that is to the left of McAllister's, and they are pretty much complete. Their landscape plan was approved recently, and they are, again, about to wrap up there. Center for Innovation, that is the old Booth Middle School, and let's see, I can't remember what they're doing out there. Oh, land disturbance only. I think they're updating some, some exterior things, parking lot, et cetera. Certainty continues to, with all of their updates. Fire Station Eighty-Five, the city is building a new fire station down in the old animal shelter lot, if you didn't know, if you weren't aware of that. And they have a demo permit, and we have yet to review their construction plans. Gerber Collision is also wrapping up. Gersheimer is done except for, they have an extended time to, their landscape is approved except for final stabilization. So they have until spring to get grass to grow on all of their slopes. Their expansion site on Necco Way is in progress. We approved a landscape plan, you might remember, back in September. So they're moving right along. The, we've not seen any movement on that proposed development. Let's see, it's in front of the Smoke Rise, which one are we calling that? Smoke Rise Plantation Estates. One, one of those Smoke Rise projects there off of Sumner Road. No movement since we approved those, that conceptual plan back in February. But we'll leave it on the list for now. Hoshisaki also moving right along. They actually have planted a portion of their landscape plan that's out in front of the building between their proposed building and seventy-four, but they, I don't believe they've done the, I don't believe they've done the full amount yet. So we're not gonna, I'm not going to inspect that until they're complete. Let's see, the one oh oh one Moba Drive, those will be the lots that are under construction for the pickleball and the other industrial tenants. And you've probably seen the site work in progress down there. And let's see, we, we have not received the building construction plans yet. Integrity Fusion at two ninety Parkade Court is also wrapping up. They have submitted a bond because they also have stabilization issues, and so they need some time to get the grass to grow out there. Coppers, that is the, the Osmos Building there off of Highway Seventy-four. And let's see, we approved their landscaping just at our last, I think it was our last meeting in December. So they're approaching the end, but not, not quite there. The Laurel Brook Condos are in progress. Moon Valley, they, again, are also complete except for waiting for that grass to grow. As you might recall, the summer was pretty hot, and everybody had a lot of issues maintaining their, their seed. Four fifty-five North Lake Drive, this is new on our list, just because they've just started. You may have noticed, this is the corner lot that's across from the Partners', the Aberdeen Shopping Center, basically. And a lot, several trees have come down over there. Just wanted to put it on the list and kind of bring it to your attention, because some of you've probably noticed it. The conceptual plan, this, this project has a lot of history, but the conceptual plan was approved back in two thousand and six. And then they had their construction plans approved in two thousand and eight, but when they came back to us, I think it was the end of two thousand and twenty-three, the city engineer requested that they resubmit site construction plans, which they did. And those were approved, and they're basically in progress now. They have some old elevations that were approved, I believe in two thousand and seventeen, but the building has changed a little bit. And so I believe they're gonna need to come back to us with, when they get ready to build. My understanding is right now they're just building the parking area and grading the pad site for the building. But they're not ready to proceed with the building at this time.
And they also, so back in
Oh, variances.
the two thousands, they had two variances?
Um, th-
Three?
Three, I believe. One was for parking, one, I can only think of two. And one was to be able to put stormwater in a portion of the buffer area. So that's why you've seen a good bit of the, the buffer and the ride-of-way. The, the site is so small that they needed those areas to, to really meet their stormwater requirements and have the lot actually be buildable. So.
So the variances all still apply, because they were granted by council, albeit almost twenty years ago. So I'm typing up an email to our city council right now about this project, because there's a lot of moving parts with it and stuff that was done way before any of us. So, and we did email back and forth with our city attorney and verified, like, yes, all this stuff still applies. They're allowed to do all this. So.
Then moving right along, the, the Primrose Daycare Building down there on Wilshire Village Drive, behind the medical office. I don't know whether any of you get down that way. It's gone up real fast.
Yes.
So I anticipate we'll probably see some landscape plans before too long on that. And then residents in World, on World Drive, they moving along. I think they're in the process of finalizing the permit for their pool. But anyway, I have not been out there personally to see how far along they are, but they're, they're getting close as well. Let's see, last page of the commercial. The Self-Storage Building next to Gerber on Highway Seventy-four. We have not, we have not reviewed their building plans yet, but, and their site work seems to be at a little bit of a stall. So that's where we are with that. The Cylon Project, construction in progress, and I anticipate we'll have a landscape plan for them soon as well. The, the Necco Way site across from the Gersheimer Expansion Site has been stalled out for a while. We've had no movement on that in quite some time. Take Five, again, almost complete. I still, their landscaping apparently is in, and I need to do an inspection as soon as they give me a call for that. This one, the toy box, some airport, I don't know why they call it the toy box, but anyway, out at the airport, some parking and paving, and we're reviewing their site construction plans. Haven't heard anything from the bank on Highway Fifty-four since we approved their building elevations and conceptual site plan back in October. And finally, for commercial, the, the medical office next door to the, the daycare center is also moving along. And we approved their landscape plan in December. So, and the building, the building is up, but not finished on the outside or the inside. So they've, they've got some time to go still. And then, real quick, we'll look at the residential. There we go. Everton is still on the list. They're not quite finished, but they're probably ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent done. So hopefully, we can knock that one off soon. It's been going on for several years. Laurel Brook, the single-family, out of eighteen single-family properties, about, there are about sixty-one complete, about eleven, eleven lots finalized. And then the, the townhomes. There are six townhome lots, and only one has been finalized and two others in progress. Moving a little slow on those townhomes. Justin, I don't know whether you can advise us a little bit on the, that townhome development proposed from Macduff Parkway. I know they were trying to, this is just past Crestwind, and they were approved on the lot that's on, in the jurisdiction of Peachtree City, but there's a landlocked Tyrone parcel that I believe, I can't remember if they asked to annex it, but it was not
It was annexed.
It was annexed?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, there's been no movement on it since then, so.
Well, so, yeah, the parcel, the parcel right off Macduff, past Crestwind, northeast of Crestwind, was approved. I think it's been approved for things.
Yes.
So they could do that whenever they want. They had the second, the other parcel that was landlocked was annexed into the city via the state legislature, because it was a part of Tyrone. So they had to de-annex. We annexed. The reason it was done was because the parcel was inaccessible from Tyrone. So really legally, we needed to annex it, because the only way to get to it is from us, is from Macduff. So they did come to council for that second parcel for an extension of what was approved on this other first parcel, because it's the same owner, and it was denied by council. So when it got annexed in, it came in annexed as agricultural, because that's kind of the default zoning when it's annexed in. So it's currently still zoned agricultural. They came in to rezone it as a residential, I, I think a L U R, which is what the, the other, the other property is. And it was denied by council. So that's kind of where it is right now. So they could, they could do that first parcel whenever they want, but maybe they're waiting on what they want to do with the second? Not sure. I haven't heard from them.
On us either. So that's that one in a nutshell. Mill Farms, slowly moving along. They have five spec homes under construction, and we've just recently, in the last two weeks, seen some new permits for about four or five other lots. So they're just getting rolling over there. The Peachtree Court Townhomes, which is part of the Governor's Square, you know, right outside of Towson, the lots that are gonna be the townhome development. We are reviewing their site construction plans now underway. Two oh one Rockaway, the other townhome development, we've seen no movement from them in, in, let's see, quite, since August, August of last summer. And I believe we're still waiting for revisions to some comments that were made on their site construction, modified construction plans. Smoke Rise Corners, that's what I was trying to come up with before, on, off of Sumner Road there. They are, I think they just have one property left to finalize, and it's under constructions. And then they'll be complete. All of the Towsons, the, what we're calling basically the three phases, the Towson Place is sort of the third phase of that development. Phase one and two, so they are moving forward with construction of Phase One, which is thirty-seven properties, and it's about twenty-four percent complete. So not moving too quickly. And then Phase, so the whole thing was approved as an initial plat and a preliminary plat, but then they're doing final plats in phases. So Phase Two, we don't have any movement on that right now. And then the Towson Place, the Phase Three there, we're still reviewing their site construction plans. So that's where we are. Now, you might notice Brett's name has appeared on the list. I basically filled him in everywhere that Mitzi was. And then we do have some blank, a few blank spots we could fill, if you don't mind, tonight. Should I run through, do you wanna say something?
Well, speaking Towson Phase Two, I just wanted to say, I drove, I drove by Towson a month or so ago, and I think they've started clearing for Phase Two. I think. I don't, they haven't planted anything, but I think I've just seen them clearing where Phase Two's gonna be.
I'll have to double-check as to whether their road construction plans were for the whole, the whole thing.
Okay.
It might have been.
I think they were, because they had pass in there, too.
Yeah, and I think we looked at something modified about it recently, so forgive me, I'll have to correct that one. So, if you don't mind, we don't really need anybody on the fire station. Coppers, anybody? I believe, again, that one's close to finished.
You could put my name on there.
Okay. That North Lake Office Building, anybody wanna, anybody wanna tackle that one?
Is it, is it, like, complicated, or?
Just the history is complicated. I don't know that there'll be much to, to really do for y'all, but if you just wanna personally keep an eye on it, that's fine.
You can put my name in there.
Okay. Let's see. I don't think we need anybody on the airport. What about the, the new ViStar Bank?
I'll take the bank.
Okay.
I'm down in that shopping center, basically, every day anyways.
Okay.
That'll be perfect.
Great. And then, all that's left is that Peachtree Court Townhomes. That should be interesting. It should be fun.
I'll take that.
Okay. Great. Thank y'all. Any questions on any of that? All righty. All right, so we'll move right on into, somebody's coloring on their own screen.
That was me. Sorry.
We'll move right into the landscape plan that we have tapped for tonight is, oh, that's right, they never did the minutes. Minutes.
Yes. Hopefully, everyone has had an opportunity to take a look at the minutes that were back in December ninth. Any comments, questions, additions, deletions to those? No? Okay. If not, do we have a motion for approval of the December ninth, two thousand and twenty-four minutes?
So moved.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes approved.
Okay.
No public hearings, no old agenda items. So yes, now we're into new agenda items. The landscape plan, Adventure Aviation, one zero eight, International Drive.
What is wrong with this thing? Oh, okay, great. Thank you. All right, so Adventure Aviation is located on, at the end of International Drive there. It's Zone G I, General Industrial. Here is an aerial photograph overlay, just to give you some context. It's surrounded by the Plantera Golf Course on both sides. And the property at the edge here, which we'll see better in the landscape plan, actually slopes down from the elevation of a golf course towards the building. So some of it's hidden, and there'll be plenty of landscaping on that slope, we'll see. So here we go. It's quite a large site. The new impervious surface area is one hundred and seventy-nine thousand and thirty-two square feet. That is new structures, drives, parking areas, and sidewalks, which is going to, the initial requirement then is five hundred and thirty-seven inches of overstory trees and three hundred and fifty-eight inches of understory trees. They have identified a tree save area that totals eight thousand six hundred and three square feet. Those are located here and here. One is about forty-eight hundred and the other one thirty-seven hundred and some odd change. And so, per the, per section one 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 zero E of the Land Development Ordinance, the Planning Commission may permit up to a twenty-five percent reduction in the total number of trees required. So with this tree save credit calculation, it would reduce the overall requirement, requirement of, for inches by two point one percent. And those numbers now come out to five hundred and twenty-six inches of canopy trees and three hundred and fifty inches of understory trees. The proposal is to provide eighty-five percent of the canopy trees and sixty-seven percent of the understory trees. And so they're requesting to use the Tree Fund Alternative Compliance Method. And it's staff's opinion that they have done a good job of meeting the requirement and planting as much as they reasonably can on the site. I'll review a few of those things with you. So we have, this is the existing building over here, and they are proposing some of their new plant material over here. These colored pink and orange ones are actually understory fruit trees. Some of them carry over into the newer section. This is their stormwater pond, which I believe existed, but then they had to expand it for the new development. They have several evergreens, two kinds of hollies, two kinds of arborvitae, two kinds of magnolias, cedars, and pines. And all these along the back here are evergreen. I believe these are the pines. These are magnolias. I think, actually, I colored some of these wrong. I apologize. So these, there's a section here that is actually pines. Pines, pines, cedars, cedars, and these are all magnolias. This is light green. These are hollies. That's another kind of holly. And these are also, also hollies. So all the green and this blue are evergreens. And then all the others are the hardwood trees, some of which are the elms, maples, oaks, and bald cypress. And there's gonna be some pretty nice fall color on this property, as you can see. There are just existing, this is pretty heavily existing vegetation here and around the corner, and also down here. If I can go back. So this is the existing vegetation here, and it wraps the corner and all the way down here. So they're pretty full up on, full up on trees there around the edges. So staff is of the opinion that they have met the ordinance requirements for trees and recommends approval.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant or representative here this evening? Please step to the podium and give your name, please.
Matt Dauber, project manager, Forza Group. Landscape architect, she couldn't make it tonight. She just called me. She was stuck in Atlanta, so I'm like, all right, I'm here. So, but yeah, appreciate you guys' time. Thank you for the presentation.
Okay, gonna go ahead and start it off. Any questions, Commissioner Cruz?
Yeah, it looks like most of the new construction is on that right-hand side of this, this image here. And, and you're not really disturbing much of anything on the left-hand side. Is that, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And so basically, you're just adding in some new trees where maybe there's room to on that left-hand side?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, yeah. Yeah, because it looks really nicely wooded in that area already, as I look at this, this is satellite imagery, so, yeah, no, no further questions from me.
Commissioner Hamner?
Do you know if these plants are native to Georgia?
I do not know, but I can find out.
Okay.
And I can let Laura know or let y'all know.
Commissioner Liotta?
I think it's, I think it's a good landscape plan, it's, it's a good mix of material. I think a lot of the material from, from my understanding of the types you proposed are, are native to the area, or at least adaptable to the area, so I'm, I don't have an issue with the species types that you used. But I've said this before on some other landscape plans, I'm not a super big fan of using the tree fund, and I would like to see some of the trees, if other commissioners feel the same way or, or agree with my opinion, increased in caliper size to maybe reduce some of the overstory deficit. And the ones that I would target would be the screen planting along the golf course property line. It's a pretty tall building, and it's pretty obvious, not only from the golf course, but from dividend. So I think it would be worthwhile to have a nice, robust, sizable screen planting where you've proposed it. And my suggestion would be to just take those particular plants that are in there, and I don't remember how many it is, but it, seventy or so trees, if they could upsize to four-inch caliper as opposed to three.
Yes, sir.
That, that's a recommendation, subject to other commissioners' review. The only other comment is there was a, I noticed a slight typo in the tree replacement calc on page T four. About halfway down it says five thirty-seven times point zero, zero-point-two-one, and just below that it says five twenty-seven, it should be five thirty-seven minus eleven to get you to five twenty-six.
Okay.
It's not an issue, the numbers are, your, your summation number's correct, it's just a typo.
Yes, sir.
Other than that, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any other comments.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with the tree assessment that our commissioner just made, and looking at the plan is, you just see the numbers, you know, as far as the trees are concerned, and we are Peachtree City, we do like our trees, and some more coverage would be great. That's the only comment I have.
Commissioner Haynes?
I agree with our fellow commissioners, just for that extra screening right there along the golf course, other than that, I don't have any other comments.
And I, I echo. My only concern, I just happened to mention it to Commissioner Liotta, was there is a bit of a slope. I mean, if you look at where the fairway starts on the golf course down to where the bottom, the back part of the building is, I mean, it's a good thirty to forty-foot drop going down, but my concern was in that narrow band, you know, how much of a slope was, was that to be able to go ahead and plant anything larger? But Commissioner Liotta doesn't expect it to be an issue, hopefully, and I, I agree. And we've run into that in, in a couple other spots, too, that, you know, we've had to go in and, you know, make a request to go ahead and upsize, just to get some, some larger specimen trees in there, especially, and that was one of the concerns from the very beginning, was trying to shield this as much as possible from, from the golf course. So whatever we're able to do to go ahead and upsize the material would be, would be great.
Okay.
Commissioner? Okay, any other, I know I asked for questions, but any other comments, Commissioner Chris?
Only comment is I support the increase in, in caliper inches as stated by Commissioner Liotta. So I think a conditional approval that, that the applicant worked with staff would be favorable from, from my perspective.
Commissioner Hamner?
There may be three of these trees that are not native to Georgia, the, I'm going to mispronounce this, the Chinese pistachio, the Emerald Green, and the, the Green Giant. The Chinese one is listed as being introduced species to Georgia. The other, the Emerald Green is native to northern, North America, and the Giant Green is a hybrid species, that would be introduced to this area as well. Of course, this information may not be totally correct on here, but I would like to see those replaced ideally with native plants. For Georgia.
Any other comments or questions, Commissioner Liotta?
No other comments.
Commissioner Reeves?
No other comments.
Commissioner Haynes?
Those are.
Okay.
So do we have a motion based upon the information and agreement we have with, number one, upsizing the, the plant material on the golf course facing side? And the second one is replacing, and I do believe we have planted, or at least approved plantings of Emerald Green. I'm not as familiar with the Green Giant, but there may have gone, but the Chinese pistachio is, is new to me also, I don't remember ever seeing that in a landscape plan before, so trying to go ahead and keep those arborvitae, if possible, to go ahead and have those as native species. So based upon that, do we have a motion?
Just a, a general comment, although that, you know, I would always support trying to plant native species, but sometimes it's difficult to find a native species plant to do what you want to do for a particular location, like screening or evergreen material or something like that. So it, it is acceptable to me if the plants they propose are adaptable to the zone that we're in. And with, with the exception that some of them maybe should be swapped out and, and substituted with similar native-type plants.
They could work with staff. That would be good.
Maybe part of the recommendation that they work with the city arborists as well as the staff.
So which ones do we want to replace with native? What was the result, or what was the final on the arborvitae's then?
Yeah, do we, do we just want to do the Green Giant and the Chinese pistachio, or all three that, that Commissioner Hamner mentioned?
I would do all three.
You would prefer all three?
Again, the Emerald Green, you know, maybe we've done in the past, but it is native to northern, the northern part of America.
I think that'd be good. Have them take a look, and if there is no other acceptable alternative, then, you know, they can go forward with what they have, but.
And again, I, this information that I pulled absolutely could be incorrect as well, but the, if it, if it is ultimately native and it works with staff from there, that would be fine as well.
Got it, got it, thanks.
Okay, so I'll, I'll attempt this, I guess. Move to approve landscape plan for Adventure Aviation at One Oh Eight International Drive with two conditions, first being that the trees abutting the golf course be increased in caliper inches from three to four, working with staff to make that doable, and then also replacing, working with staff to replace the Green Giant arborvitae, Chinese pistachio, and the Emerald Green arborvitae with, with species that are native to, to our, our area in Georgia.
Okay, that sounds good. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion with conditions and a second. Any other questions, comments? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, approved with stated conditions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, next we have some building elevations to look at for the, what we all are familiar with as the Blue Roof Center on Willow Bend Road near, just around the corner from us. And this lot is zoned GC General Commercial, right here at the corner of Fifty-four and Willow Bend, and here's an aerial view of the site. So this property, as you know, could use some serious updating, and that is the proposal we have before you tonight. There are apparently several ongoing maintenance issues due to deterioration of the existing materials, and the applicant wishes to give us a modern, new, updated look for the center. The existing materials are vinyl siding, which is faded to a gray, some blue metal roofs, and there, there is a limited, a very limited amount of concrete block that has a, a ribbed finish on it. And so the proposal is for, they would, are proposing to replace all of the vinyl siding with hardy lap siding, which staff feels that fiber cement siding meets the intent of the Land Development Ordinance for durable and long-lasting materials that are also low maintenance, so doing that would actually bring the property into, into conformance with respect to primary materials on the front and side facade, side facades, and even some of the rears there. In addition, we have color requirements in the ordinance, and the state predominant color should be neutral or earth tones. The dominant color proposed for the site is a white color. You can barely see it down here, but you can tell that it is a warmer color than the white background. So as we know, white, white is considered a neutral, but sometimes can have a high reflectance depending on the shade that is chosen, and the shade proposed here is Frostbite by Sherwin-Williams, which I said does have a, sort of a warm hue to it. The proposal is to paint the majority of the hardy siding and also the existing concrete block that I mentioned. A dark blue, now, it does show up better here as a dark blue, but the pictures in your packet are fairly bright, and I did confirm with the applicant that that was only to have it show well in the, in the renderings, sort of, you could definitely see the, the difference. But they do have a sample for you that we can show you later of the more true colors that are being proposed. So dark blue would be a secondary color to accent different sections of the buildings and break up the expanses of the white, which will create some visual interest. They're also proposing, in the case of the one that you have on the screen now, changing the facade so that there are some parapets, and then some taller and some lower, you can see the blue, the proposed blue sections have a taller parapet, which will just help to break up that facade and, and add some visual interest. Again, this, this proposal is mimicking these existing photos right here. The upgrades also include black metal roofs, they want to replace the, all the storefronts with a dark bronze-colored storefront. New lighting and signage is, is also being proposed. Now, you're not approving lighting or signage this evening, but that is part of their proposal. And then black and white striped awnings are proposed. Some of these are design elements, and some of them, again, are just for improved aesthetics, and then some of them will actually be protecting customers and whatnot. And as far as the striping goes, striped awnings are permitted by the ordinance if colors complement the character of the structure or the group of buildings, and staff does feel that the striped awnings complement the colors selected for the buildings and will generally enhance the overall appearance of the center. And just go through some of my slides here. Again, down at the bottom here are the proposed colors, which don't read very well on the screen, I apologize. Frostbite and Sea Mariner is the color for the blue. Black, black roofs, dark bronze storefronts, and then the striped, striped awnings. Here's some more, this is a before picture of the, the area that has that building setback. The, I think Sarah's Upholstery is on this far corner over here, and this is a night view of what this could look like, creating a little plaza space in front of this. And then here's a picture of, from the corner of Fifty-four and Willow Bend with a proposed new sign. Again, you're not approving signage tonight, but that would be the look from the corner. I believe I have one more. This is the view from Willow Bend Road, and then this is the, the group that has the, what is it, Lorena's, the Mexican place right there, and this would be the proposed new look. Quite, quite an improvement. I think that's all my slides, yeah. So anyway, staff feels that the proposed building improvements at three hundred Willow Bend Road meet the requirements of the city's ordinances and design standards and recommends approval.
Thank you, staff. Is the applicant, or applicant rep, if you please come to the podium and give your name and who you represent?
Hello, my name's Hartwell Spencer, I'm with H. Builtwell. Thank y'all for your time, and here to answer any questions you have.
Do you have anything else to, to add to staff's?
I mean, I think Mr. Hook did a great job, it's basically, you know, a reface of the whole center. It's actually been in my wife's family since the mid-nineties, and I think, as you know, it's, it's always been a hundred percent leased out, so it's always been occupied, and it's, it's a great staple for the area, and it's a great location, right near everything, but it's just time for an update. You know, there's a lot of maintenance needs going on right now, a lot of roofs leaking, we got waters coming into some buildings, so it's kind of, this whole process started out as like a maintenance rehab essentially, but then we decided to go ahead and replace all the siding with the hardy siding, and then we wanted to do a little bit, you know, aesthetics just to bring, you know, the whole front up and everything like that, and kind of really give the tenants a little bit more than they deserve, it's such a great area.
Great, thank you. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and start it off with questions of the applicant or staff. Commissioner Haynes?
I don't have any questions, other than I think the, the renderings look great. Thank you, staff, for clarifying the difference in the colors, that was one of the questions I had, but I think the renderings look great, and I'd be excited to see it.
Commissioner Reeves, questions?
So I'd like to see your samples. I really would, and I'm so very, very glad the white does not look like the packet.
Okay, so like Mr. Hook said, the renderings, the blue, we were to go with the dark blue, which is a lack of renderings. So that's why I wanted to bring your sample in, and there's two actual whites on here, this is the Frostbite that we're using, I just wanted to put another white in there just to show you that it's a little bit warmer, but this is the, the blue that we're going to go with.
Okay.
And again, this is the accent color, and this is just, honestly, just to provide a little bit of definition and separation for the tenants. We really want to make this, you know, you know, this, this area so valuable, and it's such a great location, we wanted to actually improve it and make it better.
Well, we appreciate it, it looks really good, and I think the update will make that area look totally different.
Commissioner Liotta, any questions?
I, I completely agree, I think this, you spent a lot of time thinking about this and doing some nice work with treatments and, and finishes and things like that. I just had a couple of questions. Laura, if we could bring up the one rendering that's kind of an aerial photo that shows the parking lot, good, most of my questions, we could probably use that one.
I don't think I included that one.
Oh, you don't have that one? It was one that was in our packet, yeah, alright.
Do you want to just describe your?
Uh, yeah, the question, the rendering I'm looking at shows, I'm guessing it's just some artistic license or for rendering presentation purposes, but it shows a new landscape island in the parking lot, is that part of the renovation?
Oh, you can actually kind of see it, right?
That is, so I've been working with Jason Walls, if you're not familiar with him. There is a potential phase two, it would be a little bit more civil. Right now, the center is, it's really contained to where, that you can't drive around the back of the whole center, so you'd go in and turn around, so we were proposing a drive-through there, and that wouldn't, that wouldn't be under five thousand square feet of impervious service to serve, so with that said, there is potential, you know, thought to add an island in there. Right now, I don't, I do not believe the parking lot conforms with your standard code if we were to rebuild the whole thing from the ground up, but we would try to make, potentially make that happen if we were to, if we were to maybe bring that building out, but it's, it's still in the works.
Okay, alright. And then you also have, there's, there's, looks like one of the big blue awning And then, you also have, there's, there's, looks like one of the big blue awnings in that elevation in the upper right-hand corner that's on the screen, looks like you're taking that awning off and you're creating like an open-air structure. Just describe that for us a little bit in terms of materials and...
Well, right now, there's basically no...
Perfect, you got it.
There's only a small outdoor seating for the one restaurant that's in there, or there's two. There's the coffee shop Bloom, which is wonderful and they have a couple tables outside, but the Mexican market, the smaller single building at the top of the screen, they have a few tables outside. And our hope is with this new renovation, we're actually bringing in a couple more tenants. We like to keep everything local, but what we're seeing is that area is currently out of Al's Laundry, or Dry Cleaner, and we're thinking that would be a great spot for a restaurant. And if that happens, we would like to go for a variance to actually remove that awning and build a steel structure or aluminum per se with, you know, to provide outdoor seating and potentially heaters for year-round.
Okay.
So, create more of, you know, just a restaurant scene.
And then, adjacent to that location on the two-story building, you've got a terrific mural on the building, is that part of the plan as well?
Yes, sir. We're working with the muralist. She's done a few for the city and I cannot think of her name right now. Gosh goodness.
Did she do the ones at the avenue?
I think, I think she, I know she said she did something for the fire department, maybe. I'm sorry, I'm going blank on her name right now, but yes, sir. It's in the works.
And I'm assuming that some of the sidewalk renovations to allow for this potential seating areas and planters and things like that, that's all essentially in the plan at some point in time or?
At some point in time, yes, sir. It's the plan, but we're still working with impervious services right now and what we can do.
So, we're really, there could be a second phase of this where you do site improvements other than the siding, building renovation?
More, yes, sir. More of like a horizontal, like a civil improvement.
Got it, okay, okay. All four sides of the building are getting the same treatment?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then, just a question on the signage. I know they're not here for signage approval, but there's a lot of different names of types of businesses that aren't in the center now. Are those potential clients or?
Those are just made-up names.
If I was a tenant in the building, I'd wonder why somebody else's sign was on my space.
Oh, yes, sir, I agree. Those are honestly just made-up names. I think one of them could be my dog's name.
Okay.
It's just for fun.
It's for presentation purposes only.
Yes, sir. Just like, I mean, you obviously notice in this rendering, you know, down 54, there's no trees and obviously, you know, that's not gonna happen. You know, there are no trees that are in there, just for visual purposes.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, that's all my questions, but I think it's a terrific concept that you've got here and I think it's gonna make that center really come back to life.
That's the plan. We're trying hard, so, thank you very much.
Commissioner Hamner?
No questions.
Commissioner Criss?
I, it looks great, but I have a couple of questions for staff and then also one for you. For staff, if they, if they come back and need to make changes to the landscape, do they need to come back to get that approved by us? Or is that just something they can do on their own?
No, they, they don't need to get approved because they're not, they're not doing any work in adding impervious surface, so, that's what triggers that requirement.
So, but if they do, because they show the added drive all the way around, which is not there currently, if they did do that, then they would need to come back?
Well, again, it depends on how much new or replaced impervious surface that they...
Okay, so it just depends upon...
It has to be more than 5,000 square feet, so...
Okay. It looks like it probably would be, but...
So, if that's the case, then yes, we would, we would be dealing with a landscape plan.
Okay. And, but they would have to come back for signage?
Yes, yeah, a signed permit.
Great.
Well, not to y'all, but to staff for a signed permit, yeah.
And then, my question for the applicant is the mural surface where you want to put the mural on, will that be hardy plank as well?
It will be.
Okay, and it would, yeah, okay, so that would be, that would be the same material, but maybe just a different, yeah, I would say that fake wood grain, if that's hard to paint on.
Yes.
You know? Yeah, okay. And, yeah, no further questions from me, I think it looks great.
Great. And we have met with the engineering, me and Jason Walls, and we're underneath the 5,000 impervious surfaces as far as the asphalt is concerned. As far as the outdoor seating that you see, you know, that's still, you know, that's a kind of a, you know, hope and dream type situation, but we're working towards that and see maybe there's like a paver situation we can install, because obviously that would definitely put us over 5,000 square feet.
You know, because it looks like you basically would be updating the parking lot as well. Is that, is that in the works? Is, want to repave some of that?
We would, we're running through the pricing right now. We're mill and pave it or, you know, reseal, seal coat it.
Got it. Yeah, I mean, yeah, from a visual standpoint, I understand why you didn't put the trees in there, but if I were going to be redoing the parking lot, I would definitely ask you guys to put some trees in between those parking spaces to provide some cover. We know how hot it gets here in summer, so...
Oh, definitely, definitely.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, no further questions from me. Looks great.
Thanks. And I guess this is a question to staff. You know, since this doesn't fall within any of the specific overlays that we have, since this is facing a major arterial property or road, are there, and I'm probably gonna answer my own question, but are there any requirements for any brick or stone or anything?
Well, yes, and, you know, in the past, we've accepted hardy siding as a primary material and we generally feel that it's, meets that intent of being durable and long-lasting and low-maintenance.
Okay. And really, what I was looking at is at the bottom portion of the buildings, you know, as we have seen some of the brick or stone wrap at the bottom, just to differentiate that section from the rest of the building. That was my only, only question and I think, you know, we've seen that pretty much on any new development.
Right.
And then, again, this kind of goes back to the age-old question of, you know, at what point in time does a building then fall into all the new requirements? And I think a good example was Aberdeen, some of the work that was done on the older portion of the Aberdeen Shopping Center. And I know there's a financial threshold that comes into play and I can't remember what percentage that is. I was told at one point in time, but I can't remember what that threshold is.
I don't know that off the top of my head either, but I would say this isn't really a, it's really just, it's not redevelopment.
Right.
So, I don't think we can require the water table around the bottom.
Good, okay. No, that was just a question. We've, you know, run into that with some other properties and again, is, we'll be meeting here shortly after we finish up with this on the Unified Development Ordinance and looking at, you know, what the requirements are gonna be in the future for even redeveloped or revitalized properties, so that was really where that question was going, so, okay, thank you. Okay, any comments? Commissioner Criss, anything else?
I'm excited to see the redevelopment. Looks great.
Commissioner Hamner?
Yeah, to echo what others have said, this looks really great. You guys have done a fantastic job on this.
Thank you.
Commissioner Liotta?
I like it, yeah.
Commissioner Reeves?
I like it as well.
Good, okay. And Commissioner Haynes, anything else?
Last thing would be, I think you're moving in the right direction with your engineer, especially if you were to add these islands and as stated, of course, we like trees and when you take away some of your impervious, you can use that towards credits.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so, sounds like we're all in agreement. Do we have a motion from the commissioners for approval of the building elevations, blue-roof center 300 Willow Bend?
I'll move to approve the elevations as presented.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So, approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, before we get into the kind of first UDO meeting, next planning commission meeting.
So, we do not, we did not get any items in time for the first February meeting, which was the 10th, but we do have some for the 24th. So, if you would like to cancel the meeting, or we could have a workshop for the UDO.
Yeah, let's go ahead and, I guess, have our first meeting here and see.
I think about it.
I know there's probably gonna be some, some questions, some items coming out of this, no doubt, and with the new planning director starting, might be a good opportunity at that point also, go ahead and meet with her and kind of get her up to speed as well as have a meeting then too, so. Okay, so let's, let's put that on hold for now and then we can make a decision afterwards. Okay, if you want to go ahead and kick off the kickoff, I think I may have one. Is it? Yep, I do, okay. So, this is the, what I would call kickoff meeting of the Unified Development Ordinance, the UDO. Just a brief agenda, just really starting to get into this after council approval back in November of last year. And just wanted to thank council and staff for supporting this and getting approval. Definitely believe wholeheartedly this is gonna be a great thing for the city. It's no doubt gonna be a lot of work and I'm sure there's a lot of things that we don't know that we don't know, but as we get into it, we'll definitely be working together as a team, as well as with staff and any other outside agencies that, or services that we need to get in touch with, so. First of all, just wanted to say welcome. Welcome to the UDO. So, everyone sitting up here at the dais, unless you told me no, you are all team members, primary team members of the UDO.
Oh, with assignments.
Yes. We'll get some swag out at some point in time, you know, and everything, but no. Support team members, of course, you know, city planning staff, city manager, city services, city council and mayor, subject matter experts, and if the time comes and we decide to go that route, whether or not we have some consultants or not, so, but those are definitely gonna be the support team members. So, just wanted to go over what the city council approval means. Number one is the UDO project team is approved to commence work, hence what we're doing. That approval also gives us access to city staff and I did get that clarified from the city manager, as the city manager, planning staff, city attorney and other city services. Outside access to outside services, consultants or other services with costs, we will need to get those. I'm sure we'll probably have to get, you know, whatever diligent information we have and then that will need to be presented to council for approval. And we'll cross that proverbial bridge when we get to it. Really want to go ahead and get us situated first before we really reach out and look to do that. And the other thing is that city manager did just set up access to Microsoft Teams. You should have all received an email. If you haven't, please follow up. That will give you access to go ahead and set up your teams. I guess I should ask a question now, because we kind of circle back on a little bit later. Does everyone have Teams or has everyone used Teams? I basically live in it every day for work, so I'm very accustomed to it, but the nice thing about it, it is set up through the city. Everything that we do, file, storage, everything like that, communications is documented, which I think is a great thing. If there are any issues, let me know. I believe, Kenneth, you said that there was a Google Drive that was set up?
Yeah, we use Google Drive for the SPOLOST, but of course, that doesn't mean that we have to use Google Drive for this.
Yes, whoever, ever since the SPOLOST, three years ago?
Yeah.
Almost three years ago when we did that, we've really got into Microsoft Teams now, like we went to Office 365 since I've been here. So, all of us have Teams, all of us do a lot of team groups with things we're doing internally. So, it was easy for me to go in and set up a Teams group, invite you all to it. Scott, you confirmed that you were able to do it, because I don't think I've ever set it up with outside people before, so...
Sometimes it's a little finicky, but it seemed to work well.
So, it worked and it has in there where you can have discussions with each other, where you can upload files, so you should be able to chat with each other and upload files that everyone can see, so.
Okay.
It should work, I think it should work better than the Google Drive.
Yeah, we couldn't do a lot of the features.
We couldn't do chat, yeah.
Yep.
So, Teams does have, so we could use it for chat if we wanted to. Now, is that subject to the open meetings law then?
Yes. It'd be open record, so if anyone requested it, they would see it.
Yeah, it's a pretty powerful interface. I mean, everything is getting saved in the backside, basically, in SharePoint is what it comes down to, so everything, you know, if we want to go ahead and, you know, really do document management and things such as that, I've embedded Microsoft Project and Smartsheet and Asana and various things into Teams to be able to access that information. So, like I said, it's pretty powerful to share information, which is, which is great.
So, who should have we gotten an email from?
Should bend from Justin, yeah.
Okay, all right. Was it in December or do you have?
Just afternoon. Yeah. I, I...
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and say, I know that I did not get one.
Yeah, same.
Okay.
I'm familiar with Teams.
I used your, I used your emails that I've sent emails to y'all before.
That's fine.
I think both y'all had Gmail, Gmails.
Yeah. I don't see...
Okay.
We can follow up, of course, but maybe it's a nice spam.
Well, there's also a way that I can send you a code to the group and it'll, so if that doesn't work, I'll do that.
Sounds good.
No, it was in my spam. I got it.
I think it's probably on mine too. I'll find it.
I got it, Justin.
Okay, good. So, we kind of thought it would be good to go back over the UDO presentation to city council from November of last year. I know there were several commissioners in attendance, of course, Kenneth and I, I know Commissioner Haynes, Commissioner Liotta were there also. Hopefully, everyone's had an opportunity to take a look at that and view the presentation, but I think it would be good to go ahead and go back over it just to refresh us as we go ahead and really start things off, so.
Sounds good.
Commissioner Hamner, I'm gonna go ahead and kick that over to you and if you could pull up the city council presentation, appreciate it. There we go.
Perfect. All right, thank you very much. This was again presented last November to the city council and we covered four major things. We talked about the current state of our development regulations, opportunities for improvement, how to implement those improvements and then, of course, the little wrap-up section as well. So, the current state of our ordinances, there's two significant ordinances that manage the development across the city. There's the zoning ordinance, which is, does things like zoning districts, permitted and conditional uses, parking and signage, et cetera, and then as well the land development ordinance, which is about development procedures, subdivision regulations, environmental protections and so on from there. Additionally, we have other documents that also talk about our ordinances and help direct the city and guide our growth and development. Major one is the 2022 comprehensive plan, which really talks a lot about, you know, what the village concept is, what our village centers are, land usage and zoning. And outside of those major ordinances, again, we have a lot of other documents that help guide the city, but there's also design guidelines that can apply additional regulations and standards to certain areas, the overlays. So, again, property along major thoroughfares has, you know, certain guides associated with it. Property within Highway 54 West around the avenue and Walmart, which is, some of us on the planning commission know and are very familiar with, you know, we were involved in a lot of that in the past. The Lexington Village Center and also the Welshshire Village Center also have additional overlays associated with those. These collectively provide a lot of benefits to Petri City. You know, I'm not gonna go through this whole list, but I'm gonna highlight a few of these is that they really stress the village concept to help promote walkability and social interaction amongst the villages and the, that are throughout the city to help foster a sense of community. Also sets up zoning districts that helps define what certain zones are, you know, for, and organize things like residential, commercial, industrial areas. Talks about development standards, which, again, we're gonna be talking about a lot as the UDO moving forward and so on from there. Having said that, you know, there's definitely opportunities for improvement... Having said that, you know, there's definitely opportunities for improvement like there are in everything that organizations do. And just to highlight some of those, you know, the areas to improve our rules and ordinances focus on things like, you know, we've had an unfocused approach. You know, the current zoning and land development ordinances have been made over the years in a very piecemeal fashion on this. And this has resulted in a number of ordinances and provisions within those ordinances that need to be updated because there may be inconsistencies, there may be contradictory definitions across all the documents, et cetera. Also, there's a lack, lack of requirements for all village centers. You know, we mentioned earlier that there were overlay districts for things like Welshshire, Lexington and Highway 54 West, but there's not for Aberdeen, Braylon, Glenlock and Kedron. There's also a lack of requirements for all the land use categories. For example, there's no guidelines for the new mixed use development ordinance, land categorization that was introduced in the 2022 Comprehensive Plan. There's also contradictory standards and also obsolete language that are within our ordinances. Additional things is that, you know, we have outdated requirements. Some older rules just flat out can't be met anymore because of the way how things have moved on from when those rules were originally done. Some rules are undefined or, you know, not historically been required. Also because we've been making these over the years, there's a lack of modernization. A lot of the older ordinances are not easily to adapt to evolving technologies and more modern urban planning trends. Also, there's a potential for adding a lot of uniformity on this. So just to be super clear, this doesn't mean that we're going to have, you know, every area of the city has to follow this strict requirements on this. For example, you know, we may say things like, you know, you, of course you may need to have some light poles, but we're not going to dictate in terms of like the bulbs that are going to be on that. So given that, you know, there's uniformity where we could talk about, you know, the way that architecture styles may be, may be done. And also to help set those requirements from there while also taking into account that the overlays might provide additional details on that. Additionally, the, the piecemeal fashion and the inconsistencies that have been done add a lot of burden to city staff. And there's also a lack of defined consequences for developers. And for example, as a lot of us know here on, on the planning commission, you know, things like West Park Walk at 5474, things like Governor Square, you know, they changed their buildings without approval. And, you know, there was no consequences associated with that as a result of them going and doing those things without approval. There's also a laundry list of things that the city staff has identified. This is just a snapshot illustrating the presence of outdated or inaccurate text within our ordinances, just within our zoning. And then as well, there's also other outdated or inaccurate texts within our various other ordinances as well. So again, there's just a litany of things that we can do. We're proposing two solutions to these issues. First of all, adapting, adopting a Unified Development Ordinance and then as well creating new overlay districts for village centers. And the way that we went about this is that, you know, we went to city council to propose doing a, a UDO committee. And, you know, we were very focused on saying that, yes, this absolutely needs to be a committee due to this scope, importance and complexity associated with implementing and updating our ordinances on that. We also pitched and said, hey, the planning commission could serve as the committee's members, given our expertise in this history with regulations. Of course, all of us had agreed to that prior to us pitching that to city council, so thank you again for that. We also invited others to help out with this, again, you know, allowing the city manager, planning and development director, et cetera, assist the committee as needed, and then also bringing in professionals, subject matter experts, consultants, et cetera, into the, the mix of us, of helping out and, and making the UDO a finalized reality for us. And then step two with, of this would be the city reviews and then adopts the UDO when we believe that this could be done. You know, the initial estimates that we are, we threw together on this is saying that, you know, this could take anywhere from two to three years to complete. But when that is done, you know, city council reviews it and the recommendations and then approves or adjusts as necessary. And then step three is after we get the UDO in place, us as a planning commission, we work on developing new overlay districts to guide this, to parts of the city that don't have those guidelines in place, which is Aberdeen, Braylon, Glenlock and Kedron. And then we could also revisit the legacy overlay districts for Welshshire, Lexington and Highway 54, just to see if any of those need to be updated as well. So when we went to city council in November, you know, we wrapped it up by saying that, you know, of course these are going to be really beneficial to the city on this. And again, you know, we'll, for the UDO, you know, it'll fix contradictory standards, you know, focus on updating the zoning and landing development ordinances, et cetera on that. And then we also said that, you know, we would do the overlay districts for village centers from there. And then I, we presented this very fancy graphic right here to illustrate that, you know, the UDO is going to basically be the foundation for the overlays and the overlays are then going to help, the UDO is going to inform the overlays and then get more, the overlays are going to be very specific to the city centers from there. And then as well, you know, when we, of course, were putting this presentation together, we had some comments that we wanted to make sure that city council absolutely saw is, and the first one, and this was really important, is that, you know, as the, the planning commission, if we were to serve as the UDO committee, we wanted to restructure ordinances, not to create or develop new ordinances on that. So again, you know, it's about, if there were going to be changes, it would be in respect to the criteria, for example, fixing any errors that would happen. You know, and the, the planning commission, we wanted to avoid cookie cutter recommendations within our ordinances and give allowances. You know, I said the lighting example earlier, here it is again, you know, we could recommend lighting, but we don't want to recommend the specific lighting, a structure that would be adhered to across the entire city. And the planning commission, you know, we hope to clean up the UDO. The cleaned up UDO and overlays would make sure that they support the comprehensive plan, be clear and objective, help our, help grow the economic development in the community, community rather than hinder it, and support the community so it can flourish with respect to things that make it unique. As well, we also stress that, you know, we want to ensure that we're promoting organization, for example, having all the definitions in one place consistent, providing tables and graphics in order to illustrate and communicate these ideas efficiently. We also want to make sure that we, you know, stressed again, we want to bring in professionals. We want to bring in experts for guidance on this. You know, a consultant could be great for bringing in experts as well. Leveraging that could be really beneficial to us. And if there are opportunities to bring in other Peachtree City advisory groups, you know, we would absolutely welcome them in. Also, the planning commission, you know, is serving as the UDO committee. We would love to have citizen involvement throughout this process. And of course, being transparent and open in meetings like this and discussing it, having people join as well and, and receiving their public input could be really beneficial for us. And of course as well, you know, we want to keep city council updated on our progress. You know, we want, there, we suggested maybe like every six months. To my knowledge and to my memory, you know, they didn't necessarily say, yes, it's absolutely going to have to be every six months on there. But, you know, we can always have those conversations and continue to keep them updated as to how this is going. And that was it.
I, I appreciate that, thank you.
No problem.
Thought it was really good to go back and, and touch on that again, just to kind of like I said, refresh everyone from that. So if you want to go ahead and move back over to the other presentation? It should be on project leadership. Okay, perfect. Okay, I thought it was good to go ahead and start off. First and foremost, in, in I and in a collective we, want this project effort to be successful. And, and I started thinking and, and kind of to myself is, is to that end, I personally want the best person or persons to lead this project and effort. I'll be right up front, it, it does not have to be the chairman of the planning commission. I, I, like I said, want to have the best person or, or persons, if, if we want more than one, to really lead this effort and, and make it successful. So what I want to do is, is look out to my, my fellow commissioners and, you know, is there any interest from anyone to basically take a, a leadership on, on this effort? As, as part of that, and I get into it a little bit in, in the next bullet point, kind of my, my thinking was, is that as we get into the ordinances, I, I would really love to see one of the commissioners kind of take point on that ordinance, that grouping, and really lead that effort. So we almost kind of have a self-directed work team working as, as we're all collaborating together. But for, for one person to handle everything, this is monumental. But we do need kind of that, that point person, you know, kind of grouping everybody together and making sure that we're going in the right direction. So I'm going to open it up. Again, it, it doesn't have to be me and, and I want to make sure that's, you know, as I said, first and foremost. So is there any interest from any commissioners to, to do anything?
I, I'd be happy to lead some of the sections. Yeah, not the whole thing, but yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense to split it up. Yeah, so if we, if we get to a point where, you know, there's a specific overlay district or different types of ordinances that we're talking about, yeah, I'd be happy to step up in the leadership.
I think it's good to take an ownership, like I said, of, of individual sections and, and really lead that effort going forward, so.
But I agree that splitting it up makes a lot of sense.
Yep.
Okay.
I'm, I'm open to taking that, the project leadership position. I'm really glad as well that you do have that third bullet because I think that's really important to have individuals who can focus on very specific things. And, you know, if you guys are okay with me being the project leader on this, you know, my approach would be, you know, for anybody who's going to be focused on something, they basically get to control it. And the idea is that, you know, I would step in and just make sure that progress is being made on that, that part. But everybody would have obviously a lot of autonomy and I would just, I'd be comfortable basically just doing project management around this and, and leading anything else that's required within this role.
I appreciate it, Kenneth. Any, anyone else?
Well, I think you're a good choice. I think you're super organized and it showed in the presentation that you prepared. And I think as part of that role, you might want to think about also being the guide person who's reviewing the individual team member efforts to say, are you going down the right path? Do you need to look at something different? Just another set of eyes on whatever each UDO team member is, is working on. And I think that would be helpful to them to get some other review of the approach that they're taking to that individual topic.
Sounds good.
Well, Kenneth, I, I do appreciate that. Again, I, you know, really kind of thought about it and said, well, like I said, it doesn't have to be the chairman by default and, and we want this to be successful and, and I know it will be successful. So I wanted to get the, the best person, the right person into that, so, so thank you. So as I go through some of this, there, there may be some different thoughts that you have. I know we kind of touched on some things, but there may be some, some other thoughts as, as we go. One of the big things and is we're going to have to define goals and objectives before we really get into anything. To, to do that, we could be here for, for hours. So I, I don't think that's something that has to be completed during this meeting, but we really need to get that completed as soon as possible. At least our high level goals and objectives. Again, I kind of said at the beginning, you know, we don't know what we don't know.
Sure.
But at least to get that started and, and agreed upon before, for work really commences. And then the next thing is, is, is any good project nowadays has to have a mission statement. So again, I think it's good to, to put that out there. Let's, let's think about that and, and come up with something as to what we see this as, as being and what our mission is as the UDO team to provide not only to, to council, to staff, but also to, to the residents of Peachtree City. Touched on work breakdown and, and prioritization. Again, we as a team are going to have to decide exactly what that looks like, what the work breakdown is and a subject subsequent prioritization. You know, do we start at the beginning? Do we go ahead and take out some of the low hanging fruits for some quick wins as, as Kenneth put in, in the presentation? And, and I think Kenneth put it in one of his slides, you know, it's, it's low effort but high impact. And, and I think that's important if we could do that. But then again, one of the things that, that concerns me is that a lot of these are, you know, ordinances are interrelated. You get into one and off you go into another ordinance and then that sends you to another ordinance and sends you to another ordinance. So, you know, we, we may look at it from a standpoint of, hey, let's go ahead and, and take some of these out. But as we get into it, we may find that there are three or four other subject or similar areas that need to be touched on also. So started kind of thinking exactly how, what is the, I wouldn't say easiest, but maybe what is the best way to go ahead and, and start going through this? You know, I'd like to be able to, to somehow track all of this again as we go through. You know, we could use something as, as simple as, you know, just a spreadsheet, Excel.
Yep.
I've used Project Smart Sheet, Asana, going through project management. You know, being able to, to assign, put some times, you know, resources, things like that. Again, that can be done in, in Excel. You know, there is a limit of line items and I can't remember how many tens of thousands that, that Excel finally will say, no, I can't take anymore. But hopefully we would not get to that point.
Yeah.
But we just need to think about that, how are we going to track this?
Yep.
You know, who's assigned, what's going on? Some of the things, again, impact rating, effort, complexity, risks, alignment, impact with other ordinances. You know, and exactly how we would go ahead and, and get all of those ordinances into Excel. That, that's another thing we're going to have to, to think of. And again, timelines, milestones and, and reporting, you know, we, we did mention every six months. You know, it may be, hey, as we get through our first major ordinance, let's go ahead and, and, you know, go ahead and put a, put a little celebration and, and say, hey, look at what we did and this is our first one and it could be a month, two months or, or whatever that may be. But yeah, we need to set up some cadence as to having the, the timelines, milestones and reporting. And then again, biggest thing is collaboration is key. You know, one person can't do this, two people can't do it. It's going to take a team to go ahead and, and do this and not just us, but, but staff, you know, subject matter experts and when and where we, we pull those people in. And, and again, as we go through it, we'll, we'll figure that out. Really just some, some housekeeping as, as I was kind of going through and thinking about it again. You know, if we want to go ahead and use something as, as simple and easy as Excel, you know, there's Google Sheets, Project, Smart Sheet, Asana. There's a lot of different things out there to, to utilize this. Some are much more robust than others. But, you know, I think probably everyone has, has had, you know, a lot of experience probably with Excel at some point in time in their, their careers. So that may be the, the easiest path forward with this. Location of working files, data information. Again, city setup, just to set up the team site. We'll go ahead and, and start getting in, into that and getting things set up as, as we see, setting up some folders and, and things such as that. Meeting space, again, if we're utilizing Teams, we can go ahead and, and do Teams meetings if we need to have an off, anything that, you know, we think of or, or need some additional information that's not at a, a planned meeting. And then the other thing is really our, started thinking, when, when's our next meeting? And that question may have already been answered by Laura saying that the 10th, is that correct?
Yeah.
February 10th, looks like it may be open. So if that is something that we would want to go ahead and get together, we have a little bit of time between now and then to start looking into some things, to start discussions. Is it the 10th?
It is, but I will say that the, the city council and executive leadership team has a retreat the 10th. Does it start the 10th, Justin? And so the new director will be participating in that, so.
Okay.
I don't know you, is there a dinner that night?
Yeah, we're going out to dinner that night, okay.
Yeah, so maybe that's not the best.
Well.
So then the 24th would be the next meeting and we do have, I can't remember, three or at least three items, maybe four.
We should probably have a. We should probably have a meeting before then.
I agree, yeah.
Because, yeah, you know, you've highlighted a few things already, which I agree with, that we absolutely need to get done, mission statement, goals, et cetera, on that. Would, I agree that we need to have those things figured out as quickly as possible. And if we can walk out of that meeting with at least those completed and then an outline of where we go next and some of those next steps, I think that will be really good for us on that. But I don't think that, you know, we, we, we just need to get those steps done as quickly as possible.
Yeah. Yeah, we really can't do anything else with those. And I, I guess from that standpoint, since planning director, you'll be out. You know, is that something we still want to have? Are we able to, since everything is going to be recorded, are we able to do that meeting?
You could.
Via teams, since everything's going to be, I mean, we can record it in teams.
Not sure you can do that.
You just still have the meeting.
We can have a special call meeting too, if you want to do it.
I'm just thinking the easiest thing without, again, tying everyone up. There's, there's ways to do things within teams of, of recording and actually transcription.
I know, but I, I'll have to talk with our city clerk about, because to me, technically too, you're a separate committee at that point. You're a, you're the Unified Development Ordinance Committee.
Right.
Which is not the planning commission. But even then, I need to ask her about open meetings because the way Georgia law is, you can't just do a virtual meeting unless somebody's sick, then they can call in. Like a quorum has to be present.
Okay, yeah, definitely let us know. As always, I hate tying people up if we don't have to for something. But if it is, if it's a requirement that we have to, then that's what we'll have to do, exactly.
Even if it's a steering committee.
Yeah.
I'll have to ask.
Okay.
Because we had our SPOS group meetings in person.
Right, yeah, I mean, we had it down in the basement.
Right.
They weren't fancy either, it was just us on a table, of course, we had the, the public invited to go as well.
And you're not, you're not required to record the meetings for the steering committee. Like if you wanted to have them in the community room so it's more informal, you could do that.
Yeah.
And we set it up like. And we set it up in a rectangle, so you're like looking at each other.
Okay.
Yep.
That sounds good.
I mean, we would just literally just need like a laptop and a TV connected to it, and then we can just review all those things, finalize, mission statement, initial things like that, and talk about our next steps from there.
Okay. Sounds good.
So Justin, would, would that type of meeting require a public notice?
Require what?
A public notice.
I think so.
Probably, right?
Yeah, how much, how much advance notice?
Right.
24 hours at least.
Oh, okay, that's not bad.
Special call meetings require, well, because you would technically cancel the planning commission meeting for the 10th, and then you have a special call meeting of the Unified Development Ordinance Committee. And, yeah, we'd have to at least notify 24 hours ahead of time and post, post it on the building.
Yeah, that would work, okay.
Yeah, we do that.
Good. That sounds good.
So then, do we, do we need to make a motion to cancel the planning commission on the 10th?
We do. So do we have a motion to cancel the February 10th planning commission meeting?
Yeah, so moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to cancel on the second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, the February 10th planning commission meeting is canceled.
But, so you all do want to continue with the 10th for the UDO?
Correct.
Okay. With the knowledge that staff, we might could have Laura there.
Yeah.
Yeah, that works.
Yeah.
Okay. And you and I, Kenneth, may, you may just need to get me, Kenneth, on technology downstairs. We're going to have it downstairs, because we redid that whole room.
Okay.
Great, we can get all the initial work done, just put, put an outline together.
Yep, got to get the foundation before we can build up from it, so.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, cool.
Do you have anything else after this?
No, that's everything, so I'm going to.
Yeah, so my thoughts on this is that I think, can everybody commit to signing up for teams by the end of Wednesday?
Yeah.
Yes.
Perfect. And then we'll start the conversations on Thursday. From there, we'll focus on mission statement, objective, et cetera, and have those conversations. And we can also have additional conversations again about like, do we use Excel for, for certain things? I, I have some thoughts already on that, which I, I can come to that meeting real quick as well. Know that, you know, any thoughts that I present are subject to, you know, any sort of feedback that you guys have on this. Ultimately, at the end of the day, the, the best ideas should always come out of this. So I, I just, I say like, you know, like, hey, I may propose some things, but that doesn't mean I'm like married to them or anything like that. You know, Scott said collaboration's going to be key on this, we're a team that's going to work together on all this stuff. So, yeah, I just want to be super clear on that as well.
Yeah, great.
Do we have a, a thought on when we would actually do that UDO committee meeting?
The, the 10th?
The 10th, at 6:30.
Essentially the same time as.
6:30, yep. And we would have it in the community room ideally.
That's where you, yeah.
Yep.
If you want it more informal and to be able to kind of be around, like looking at each other.
That'd be good.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, that's good.
Works for me. So I'll get that organized.
Okay, sounds good.
Appreciate it.
We'll just have to, one last thing with that is, is I'll get with the clerk because we'll have to set up a Unified Development Ordinance Committee, you know, in the, in our agenda software. And we'll need to, we'll really need y'all to kind of talk about, probably in teams, what you want the agenda to be for that first meeting.
Sure.
Because we'll have to, we'll have to post an agenda like we do for everything else.
We'll discuss.
If we have any issues signing up for teams, should we just call you or?
Sure. Call me or email me or whatever. Or if you're still here tonight, we can walk back to my office and try to figure it out.
It's not a bad idea.
Okay.
Perfect.
Guess anything else?
It's going to be exciting.
Yeah, looking forward, getting it started. Okay, if there's nothing else, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion to adjourn, second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.